Um, staff and members of the public who are joining. Um, otherwise, um, we will keep your video off.
Alright, ready? Do I go?
I think so.
Um, I call this meeting of the Scioto Township Board of Trustees to order at eight oh five.
Recording in progress.
Okay, keep going.
Um, we are, we are holding this meeting in person, but we are still operating under the Washtenaw County Emergency Order. And this extends the option for members of the Board of Trustees to participate and vote remotely. Uh, the board has also decided to extend this option to members of the public for purposes of viewing and to make public comments. Uh, when the clerk calls the roll, those members of the Board of Trustees who are present at Township Hall need only indicate that they are present. If you are participating remotely, please state so and indicate your location by the municipality. Clerk Flintoff, please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Here.
Palmer?
Here.
Flintoff?
Here.
Courtois?
Present in Ames, Story County, Iowa.
Thank you. Jerome?
Here, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
Noel?
Here, Scioto Township, Washtenaw County.
And Vogel, who I know is on her way, um, will be joining us soon. And we'll, I'll note the time that she arrives when she does. We have quorum.
Great. Um, our, the purpose of the meeting this evening is to, um, uh, work with our, um, consultant who's leading the search for Township Administrator, um, and that's Amy Sell. And, um, so I will, um, sort of defer to you, Amy, in terms of how you would like to structure the time. We do have to include, uh, time at the end of the meeting for, uh, public comment.
Great. Thank you so much for everyone taking the time and, and being here and being so thorough in this process. Um, my suggestion for, uh, our activities for the evening would be to, uh, do a few things. Um, one is to identify the finalists that we would like to move forward with interviews on October fifth and sixth. Um, the second thing is to finalize the details for that event, those interviews. Um, and to determine, uh, generally there's a staff panel or it could be a staff forum. There's also an opportunity to involve the community in terms of a community panel or forum. The forums, the difference between the interview panels and the forums would be with the interview panels. Um, a panel, a group of six to eight interviewers would be selected. They would be provided guidance in terms of que- and sample questions to use. Um, in terms, and they would provide specific feedback afterwards. Uh, if we did forums, the questions would be provided to me in advance. And the participants would be able to listen to the candidates' responses to those questions, but would not ask questions. Um, in all manners, the participants can provide feedback via a community survey or a staff survey. Uh, members of the public are also able to watch the interviewer, the interviews that take place with the board, because those will be done in a public setting, um, on October fifth and sixth. And so members of the community can also provide feedback via watching those public meetings as well. So I would like, um, guidance from the board in terms of the structure of the interviews to take place. Um, and after we determine the finalists, I might have more guidance depending on the number of, of finalists. But I did want to mention that those are my two goals, uh, to leave this meeting with a list of finalists and the preferred interviewing format.
Great. I don't think there's any objection to that agenda. Um, how would you like to proceed? I'm assuming you want to proceed in order. Um, how, how would you like to proceed with identifying the finalists?
Great. Um, so there are-
I'm, I'm sorry. I guess we, I guess we do need to formally adopt that agenda. Um, um, perhaps, um, just, I, I move the adoption of the agenda as, um, proposed by our consultant, Amy Sell.
Support.
So we have, um, move by Hathaway, support by Palmer. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Courtois?
I'm sorry?
Um-
Did you say me?
I did, Jackie.
Sorry, the, my sound is really garbled. Uh, yes.
Thank you, Jackie. Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
And welcome, Jane. I saw you came in a moment ago. Did you hear the motion?
I, I did.
Okay, and you vote to approve?
Uh, yes.
Great. Agenda adopted as presented.
Alright, Amy, um, turn it back over to you.
Great, thank you. Um, so I have, we had fifty-eight applicants. And of those applicants, thirteen of them, we are, we have shared with the Board of Trustees. Um, what I would like to do at this point is to identify, get feedback from the board on which applicants the board would like to get to know further via interviews. Um, so my suggestion is that I go through them in numeric order that was, um, identified, um, on the information that I provided earlier. And I would like to get, uh, kind of an indication from each board member on each candidate, if there's interest in moving forward with them as a first step. So the first-
Okay, I, I need to say that I've got to catch up with the numeric references. Where do I find those?
That would be in the link that I sent.
Yep, I'm in that link. I'm, I'm in all the documents and I see the thirteen candidates.
They have numbers in the left column.
Yep, in column A.
Um, are, are you looking, there's two, there's two links. Are you looking at the one with all of the documents or are you looking at the spreadsheet?
I am, I'm looking at the one with all the documents. So let me get. Well, they're shared with you. I'm sorry, that-
Amy, would you be so kind to just describe for our public, um, the, you know, request for confidentiality and why we're going to be talking about this without people's naming people tonight?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, um, and Jane, I just shared with you the link to the document.
Excellent, thank you.
This is the summary sheet, sure. Yes, and I've been sharing way, way too much lately with everybody.
Such a good thing.
Yeah, so, so there's, um, a variety of, um, laws. The, with the, the Open Meetings Act does provide certain exceptions. And one of those exceptions under Michigan law is that if a candidate requests confidentiality, uh, the contents of their application can be done privately. And discussions around considering that moving that person forward into interviews can be done in a manner that provides confidentiality. Um, in these key roles where people are serving the public, oftentimes they are in a similar role in a different community. And to be, have their, uh, for, to be, um, done, known widely at the beginning of the process would be a deterrent for many candidates from seeking that type of opportunity. So, um, to provide them with confidentiality, there is, uh, a provision under the Open Meetings Act in Michigan that allows that, uh, which is u- unique to Michigan. So some, um, other states have a little bit done differently. But once the candidates are identified coming out of this meeting, we will be confirming with them tomorrow that they are still interested, that nothing else has changed. And then be gathering bios and sharing that broadly so that the pu- and then from everything from this point forward is done in public. The interviews will be done with the Board of Trustees will be done in public. Um, and any deliberations regarding candidates will be done in public. Um, some communities decide to do this in a closed session. Uh, but this board has decided for transparency to let everyone, um, kind of see the action, although we will be using numbers and not using identifiable information to protect the confidentiality of the candidates.
Thank you, Amy.
Great. Thank you. Alright, so candidate number one. Um, I don't know, I could, I can see P-, I can see four of you. So if I see a hand raised, I could go by that. But then, I don't know if, um, uh, board member Jerome or board member Courtois want to use a thumbs up or some other indication, or I can do it verbally as well.
Um, maybe, maybe, um, verbally would be good at least for Jackie. Um, and, and maybe Alec as well. They, I think they're having unstable internet.
Okay, alright. So maybe, um, so of, so for candidate number one, is there interest in getting to know that candidate better? Alright.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
So, this was a candidate who had some interesting experience, but I noted that there was a news article included in the packet about a sudden departure from a previous job. And I, um, you know, which, which might be a cause for concern or might be very understandable. And I, I was just trying to, do you have any further context around that?
We tried to provide all context that we could identify in the phone interview notes. We asked the candidates to go through their career transitions to try to get to that area as, in particular.
I guess I just remain concerned about just very minimal responses to the questionnaire. This, this candidate didn't rise to the top of my list.
But that seems to be a consistent theme, so I will note that. Um, candidate number two, are, is anyone interested in getting to know candidate number two better through interviews? I've got, looks like two.
I am.
And that's a yes from myself as well.
Four, alright. Candidate number three.
Wait a second, I gotta go back and catch up here.
Oh, sorry.
Pogging between screens. Three, oh yes, okay.
Alright, I got one, two, two people interested in candidate number three.
Oh, wait a minute. I gotta make sure it's the right one. Let me go back to my-
And Amy-
I'm sorry, we're on three?
Amy is a yes from me for number three.
Great, okay.
And a yes from, yes from me.
Kind of on the fence, I guess, about that one.
Alright.
Good. Amy, is it appropriate to, to discuss or all, or you just want to know if there's at least one person who wants to bring forward?
Um, yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of the level of interest for the first. So it sounds like we've got three to four people interested in that one. How about candidate number four?
Oh, my gosh, hang on. Four, oh yeah.
I've got four, five, six. Alright. Candidate number five.
Hmm, let's see. I gotta find my notes. Let's see.
Looks like zero.
A- Amy, could I ask one clarification? I believe there was one added. Will that be thirteen?
Yes.
Just, okay, I just want to make sure. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Right. Candidate number six. Alright, candidate number seven. Looks like I have one. Candidate number eight.
Hold on. I need to check something, Amy. My sequence went off here. And I don't know what happened. I've got to go back.
I do have my hand up, just-
Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, I'll put it down for Jackie.
No, I'm sorry. I, I just meant I wanted to make sure I was counted.
Great, thank you, Jim. So I got, I think, one, two, three, four. At least four for candidate eight. Right, candidate number nine?
I've got to go find that and hang on a second.
I'm on the fence, on the fence. But I, I don't want to bring the person forward if no one else does.
I'll go with point five for candidate number nine.
Yeah.
Candidate number ten?
Hmm.
I've got, looks like three.
That would be yes, on candidate ten.
Four, okay. Uh, candidate number eleven?
Eleven.
Looks like maybe th- three. Donna, were you with?
No.
No, okay, so I'm, I'm gonna go with two then for candidate number eleven. Candidate number twelve?
Yes, from me.
Looks like three for candidate twelve. And candidate number thirteen?
Yes, from me.
And I've got three.
I guess I'm, I'm kind of on the fence about this, this one.
Got three and a half. Okay, so I have candidate number four has six votes, so it's kind of the first tier. Then candidate number two and ten would be kind of our, have at least four. So I would definitely recommend moving forward with those candidates. Um, we didn't have any interest in candidates one, five, six. Um, candidates seven and nine had one or less votes. Um, so I'm for-
What about candidate eight?
Um, right. Oh, yes, candidate eight is at four votes as well. So that would be, so I would, I would definitely consider, I'm trying to figure out the, the top and kind of the two ends of the, the scale there. Um, so it looks like there's four candi- candidates two, four, eight, and ten. Um, would be one tier. I think the candidates that are, are two or less, um, are probably another tier. And then we have candidates three. Candidates twelve and thirteen that had either three or three and a half. So I, I, I would like to focus the discussion in two areas. The first area is for the candidate, for candidates number seven, nine, and eleven, which did not generate as much interest. Does anyone feel strongly about still including them? Or would people feel comfortable, um, not moving forward with those candidates? For those people that did indicate interest in them?
I'm okay dropping them.
I would be comfortable as well dropping them.
Okay.
I, I really thought that person would be great for another position that we have offered. Our, our project manager position. We suggest that?
We, we definitely can. We definitely could provide feedback, yes.
Yeah, I was thinking number eleven for that position.
Great.
Yeah, actually, both of them. I, I, there were two or three of these people who I thought.
Yep. Eleven and six were my project managers.
Yes, I said that. Six, too.
Yep.
Alright, good to know. We will see what we, we can do to, there's obviously a lot of interest in Scioto Township. And we'll see what else we, we can, when do this group of, of people. So that brings us to a group of candidates, numbers three, twelve, and thirteen to discuss. Um, another thing we could think about is with the first group of four candidates, I mean interviewing s-, you know, interviewing seven people, um, is not out of the question. Um, we do have Tuesday, um, between, uh, the October fifth between seven and ten, and Wednesday between seven and ten. So, um, we have enough time already allocated with the Board of Trustees to do seven interviews. Um, generally, interviews could be done in a, in forty-five minutes with a, uh, like a five-minute break in between. Um, so that's, because my, my view on this is, it's, you know, there, there's a great opportunity to get to know people better. And once we, uh, and there's so much more that you, like, I tried to provide a fairly thorough background around the candidates. But, um, getting staff input, getting the community input, getting to have direct conversations with these candidates will provide a wealth of information. So, um, I am very comfortable moving forward with seven. Or we could focus discussion around the, um, three candidates, numbers three, twelve, and thirteen to, um, see if there is interest in moving it to a, a lower, uh, number of people to bring back in. But I'll, I'll open that feedback, that, that discussion item over to the board, yes.
So Amy, I'd like to clarify, just going back and forth between the screens. I don't know, maybe I'm not like firing on all cylinders, but I just want to make sure I'm tracking everything. Candidate two, four, eight, and ten, we are definitely going to interview.
That's my recommendation, yes.
Seven and nine got one or less.
Yes.
And then one, five, and six seemed to get bundled. One, five, and six got no-
Yeah, they did not get any, my, my-
Okay.
My count was, they did not get any interest.
Right, and then what, then what, what draws our attention to three, twelve, and thirteen? Did they get votes? Or did they get?
Yeah, so they got three or three and a half votes.
I see, that's, that's where we are. That's, that's the piece I missed. Thank you.
Yep, and especially because the other, of, of the other candidates, one was at six and three were at four. So there's a really fine line between four and three. And that gets me a little concerned that we're not, you know, that there's, there's more we should learn. And especially with at least three people interested in getting to know any of these candidates. I, um, am very comfortable moving forward with the seven so that you can all get to know them better.
Great.
Okay.
Uh, trustee Noel?
Yes, Amy. I have a question. So when these dates were set up, I had indicated that I have a conflict on October fifth because there's a card meeting that night. And it's a significant meeting. There's a lot going on there. I don't know if I'm going to miss it or not, or go to part of it and code a part of the interviews. But, you know, that's going to pose a dilemma for me. Will was aware of this. So I'm wondering, could we stack the second night more heavily than the first if we're going to do seven? So that if I have to miss the first hour or two of the interviews, I can get most of the interviews in.
Definitely, definitely.
Um, there, there's another option. I, I should have brought the schedule with me. My memory is that on the second night, um, we offered two times. Uh, one was a four o'clock start and one was a seven o'clock start. And I think after, um, because we, we had, um, Kathy, originally we had one board member who couldn't attend on both of those nights. So we were losing you on one night and losing, I think, Jane on the other. Jane was able to change her schedule to be available on the second night, um, or the second date. But originally, I think we'd offered between, either a four o'clock or a seven o'clock start. So if, 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 yeah, if we could, if everyone's available still from four o'clock on, one option would be to sort of do a marathon on the second night, and that way we could accommodate your schedule.
That'd be good for me.
I'm fine going on the sixth from four on, if that makes sense, Amy.
Yes, I-
Amy, what's your experience doing, have you, what's your sense of seven interviews? Is that effective for, for one evening?
Um, it is, it's, it's going to be focused on you all. Um, the can-, because the candidates are only going to, especially if we do it via Zoom, um, then I think it's, it, it's going to be easy on the candidates. And I think also, you're, after the, if we do Zoom, um, interviews with staff and is, you know, if we get involved, the staff and the community, um, in addition to the interviews, you're going to get a lot of feedback from staff and the community members about, that'll help. So if you do get a little bit tired and interview six or seven, um, and you, you will get a lot of other data points back to help you make the decision. Um, and it would, is also with bringing in seven candidates, what will likely happen is, or what, I, you know, I wouldn't be surprised happens is that there are maybe two or three that you really want to bring back again. If, if that, or it could happen that one is just absolutely perfect. But you also, I mean, we, we do this process so that you all are comfortable with every step. Um, so we, you know, we'll, I think getting to know seven will be a great next step. And then we will have a deliberation meeting in public to decide what to do af- with the results of that information, which again could be to go, you know, pursue an employment agreement with a candidate. Um, or it could be to have a second round, or, or it could be that none of these candidates were a good fit and then we, we start over. So all those options are always open to the board, um, as we go through this journey.
Uh, clerk, clerk, Flintoff?
I just want to, um, verify probably with, with Alec, Amy, but everybody, that we couldn't start any earlier than four on the sixth. Is that true?
Yes, I couldn't start earlier.
Okay, thank you. And Amy, in terms of the sequence, am I understanding your process correctly? That the board will do the, the full interviews, but not deliberate? So we wouldn't really be taking the time between to deliberate? And then, um, we would have a process with staff to do their interviews or assessments, community, whatever it is. And then we would have a meeting to deliberate. Is that your idea?
Yes, and it would be on the same day. So if, so if we're targeting this, the Wednesday, the sixth, then I would set up staff meetings to happen during the day, because that's when staff is, it's part of their day. Um, and so I would schedule those meetings to happen, um, you know, via Zoom. We would coordinate those panels, with those, you know, we can, we could do a, a panel or kind of a forum. Um, I would like guidance from you all on which you would prefer. But either, both of those can be very effective. And then, um, is, and then also in terms of, um, community involvement. So there's an opportunity to do, um, a community forum. We could even do community forums on the fifth or a community panel. Those are not open to the public, um, but the public meetings on the sixth would be. So I know I'm throwing a lot of different options, options here, but, um, you do have choices. But we do, the, the feedback will all be gathered by me as quickly as possible. Um, and then provided to you on probably that, by that Friday. And then there would be, uh, my recommendation would have a, would be to have a meeting the following- And then there would be, my recommendation would have, would be to have a meeting the following week. Maybe there's a regularly scheduled board meeting on that Tuesday where you would have, you could set aside a portion of that meeting to discuss next steps. But you would have all this information to have over the weekend to kind of review as well as reflect on your experiences.
Clerk Flintop.
I think that sounds great, Amy. I'm comfortable going ahead with the seven interviews on the sixth. Yeah, the sixth. I think with the staff, you know, take some time to talk with staff and make sure we catch everybody. I know that most people will want to join by Zoom, but since all the staff's here in the office, if anybody does want to come in person, if they feel comfortable, no pressure. But I'm sure that the staff would be much more comfortable meeting in person than using Zoom. It's, you know, something, some of our staff have even less experience with than we do. And in particular, just because we've got different shifts with our utilities and fire folks, too, it's going to take a bit of coordination.
And one thing that has worked well in the past is like a meet and greet with staff as well, especially with, that can be done informally, in person, you know, or in Zoom, too. I mean, that's.
Yeah, and we could be outside or, you know, whatever.
But, yeah, but and I can, if I get direction to just coordinate an informal experience with staff, staff can then use the feedback, their insights from that experience, as well as by watching the public meetings to provide feedback to me that I would then consolidate and provide back to the board.
So all of these candidates are available to come in person?
We don't know.
That I do not know.
Okay.
We did provide them the interview dates, and so that is a possibility for them to be in person.
Trustee Vogel.
Can I just ask a question again?
Yeah, I think Jacqueline had a question, and I'm happy to go.
Go ahead, Trustee Corto.
Oh, okay. So Amy, I'm sorry, I was trying to keep track of the different options. So you mentioned a forum or a panel, and then these, a meet and greet with staff, a community forum. Can you just, I didn't quite catch all of those different options. And who would be involved with them? Could you just briefly review those again, please?
Sure, sure. So I think on the staff side, I think we have determined that kind of an informal meet and greet is the way to go. So on the community side, I have, one option is to have community members form an interview panel and ask questions of the candidates and provide formal feedback. Another option is to invite members of the public to have kind of an informal meet and greet. We could do it outside, especially for candidates that are coming onsite. And if we wanted to do something outside that's socially distant, early October, the weather isn't bad, that's an option. With Zoom, I've done small group discussions where we identified people ahead of time and invited them into that forum. So I've done a few different things to engage the community in a, kind of a structured and vetted way, as well as all residents, all community members have the option to view the public interviews with the board, you know, via the regular channels.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Hopefully I didn't make it even more confusing. Sorry about that. Lots of info.
Trustee Corto, I can't really see you, so I don't know if, I can't sense from a visual cue whether you've gotten your question answered.
Thank you, I did. And I, I mean, even without the video, my sound is garbled, so I don't even dare try the video. But yes, that was good. Thank you.
Trustee Vogel.
Okay, so again, I'm just wanting to confirm on tracking this. So it sounds like the day of coming down to Wednesday, the sixth, some kind of engagement with staff during the day, some kind of community forum during the day, the board interview of all seven candidates begins at four o'clock. And that's the process I want to focus. And then the other thing I think we're deciding is we would continue the deliberate, whatever next step we're at, we would continue at the October 12 DOT. Okay, so now I want to go back and understand the interview process, the board interview process. We're going to be cycling through seven candidates. Help us sort of picture how that plays out.
Sure. So you will be receiving a packet of information from me that will have the interview schedule. We will be touching base with the candidates after this to set up the schedule based primarily upon their availability. Then, once that schedule is nailed down, we will provide guidance on interview questions to board members. Since there's certain questions that are inappropriate, and we want to make sure that everybody has some training around appropriate questions. We will also provide sample questions based on the topic areas that we are focusing on, such as financial acumen, project management, leadership skills, communication skills. So you will also have a list of questions in those different areas. We will also give you a note sheet to take notes on in those different areas. And then I will be, we will be sending you a, another link where you will provide evaluation feedback to us on the candidates that we will then summarize and share with the full board.
That sounds really great.
Well, yay. So the general way that an interview works is to do it in kind of a round robin, where each board member has an opportunity to ask one question, and then you, we will go through it for the allocated time. I have seen some interviews where you, the group only gets through one question because people are more either communicative, or I wouldn't say long-winded, but sometimes they'll tell lots of examples. And sometimes there's follow-up questions that I think are appropriate to ask, as long as they're not inappropriate questions. But then there's some people that are very concise, and I've seen interview groups run out of questions. So it will really, you know, depend in how that is. But yeah, so that's, so we try to prepare you the best we can to have a thorough and relatively organized.
Just a quick follow-up question, and that is, we get this set of questions, but then it would be up to Supervisor Hathaway and the board to sort of allocate those questions out to the seven of us? Would that be typical?
Usually what I've seen is that usually it is not, that I have not seen that be the case. I have seen each board member would have areas that they're very interested in, either because it's a particular area of it. So Donna might have, not to pick on Donna, but she might have some finance questions that she really wants to focus on. And then somebody else might be very focused on communication skills. And so they want to make sure that those questions get asked. It is good to make sure that, because they, the framework of criteria is something that you want to get comfortable with. So if someone is coming and they've been a former finance director and they're CPA, and you figure, okay, I don't have to worry about their finance skills, but I really want to learn more about their leadership style. And so maybe, you know, so it's, I think by having each board member focus on their priorities and their areas of questions or concerns about a particular candidate within the framework, provides an experience where you can all feel as comfortable as possible about the candidate because you've been able to hone in in the areas that you might not be sure about in terms of what they've demonstrated and what I've been able to present so far.
We can sort out the questions and how we want to organize that ourselves. Basically, you know, based on, I think there are some norms for conducting interviews in Scioto Township that I've seen in the interviews that I've been a part of and attended. So we can, we can figure that out. Trustee Noel.
Yes, Amy, I have a question. So in the past, when we've interviewed manager candidates, we have all had assigned questions and done a round robin. I like your idea of letting us kind of choose the questions in our areas of interest. But would you want us to at least start and try to ask the same questions in our areas of interest of each candidate? So we can see how they respond to the same question?
I think that makes sense, and that's often what will happen, where people do have an area. And that's why I do provide questions in advance on the topic areas that, in that framework that we talked about before, that I presented before. So that you do have sample questions to use so that they are, they can be consistent. I know, I, I know of other situations where the protocol is we ask the exact same questions in the exact same way because we don't want to look like we are treating one candidate differently than others. The experience I've had in other communities is that each candidate is unique. And asking candidate, and asking questions to get to know the full candidate because they are different and they are going to have different experiences is acceptable. So it's not like a legal requirement. Again, other communities have over closed with their attorneys to do it in different ways. But again, if you have a norm of having the same questions and having it scripted, that's completely acceptable also.
Clerk Flintop.
So to go back to kind of finalize a process for the sixth is, you know, when I imagine doing an informal meet and greet with staff and an informal meet and greet with community and getting feedback from them all in one day before starting interviews at 4:00 PM, you know, that seems like a lot and a little bit of a clash. I would want to reserve the day for staff. And I would say at this point, prior to board interviews, I don't think having the community interaction with candidates is critical. I would like to get that feedback later, but what I'd like to do, because everybody works different schedules and I'm sure most staff, you know, with an informal meet and greet, certainly wouldn't be comfortable speaking to the candidates if public were present. And that kind of would inevitably happen, I think, with the informality. So I would suggest reserving the day for the staff along with some sort of flexible informal format, whatever you recommend. But in a way that they can document their, you know, scores or whatever it is, you know, take the job description or whatever it is and mark it up so that we have that information for consideration.
What I've done in the past for in-person events is to have a little summary sheet where participants can just write on it their feedback about different candidates.
It's open-ended.
Yeah, very simple form. They turn it in. We summarize it and provide that to you, you know, in the next few days after we gather. You won't be getting, yeah, the board will not be getting it prior to the interviews. You'll be getting it
That's fine.
within two days.
Yeah, and then, and then I would say I would want the, you know, input and feedback from the community after we've done interviews. We did a community meet and greet for a very public-facing job of the fire chief, you know, which is a little different than administrator. And so, so that we did with, I think, the final three or four people we were going to interview. But that was also, you know, pre-COVID and things. And so I would suggest that we get the community input, you know, somehow if there's a structured way to do the deliberation and get that input then.
Yeah, and that's very understandable and easy to do. What we would do is have, what I would recommend is having a form that we would create online and that there could be a link on the websites. We can provide the bios of the candidates and a link to the feedback, and we can keep that open 24 hours after the interviews and then gather it and provide that to you. So, and I think that's a great way for them to really see how they interact with the board and provide feedback. So I think that would keep things relatively simple since we do have a, it'll be a busy day for everybody. So that's, those are great ideas.
Alec and Jacqueline, I can't see you. I don't want to leave you out.
Nope, I'll chime in if I have further questions.
Okay.
Me as well, thank you.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Well, we have an opportunity to talk to, see the candidates in person before we make a decision or not.
If we, if we bring people onsite for the sixth and they're local, then they could attend the meeting live, or it could be via Zoom. So there's an opportunity to meet the candidates on October 6th. There's also the opportunity to bring back, you know, a one or two finalists before you meet them. So you have, definitely have a few options there.
Trustee Vogel.
I could, I could envision, I support Clerk Flintop's notion. It felt like a lot to put this all together on the sixth. So the staff data, the sixth, the board's interview of the sub, potentially keep all those parallel by keeping them all on Zoom. Then we have board data, we've got staff data. It's not clear to me yet where the community input is, so I want to talk more about that. And it sounds like we're potentially bringing a smaller number of candidates back that we could potentially be doing at the board meeting on the 12th. And that might be the time to bring them in person, or what?
So I think, just to add one clarifying question, and then I'll let, but I would see that the meeting on the 12th is a deliberation and that we would bring them back at some point after that.
So the deliberation might narrow the field but not arrive at a final decision, is what you're saying?
That could be an outcome, yes.
It would actually be the first time we would be deliberating on any of this. Like, let's say, because I'm sure there's some people we're bringing back that, you know, like, we're bringing in some people that I was a zero on. It'll be the first time, you know, that we have that deliberation, you know, of the gulf that's maybe there on certain issues or people. We won't know that until we start deliberating. That's the beauty of averages. It covers, it covers up the gulf for a while. So my question, Amy, is with staff, I just want to say, especially, and, you know, again, no pressure on anybody, but insofar as people feel able or comfortable to come in person for an interview, I find that much more valuable to me to kind of get a sense of who they are. But I would say even more importantly than the interviews being in person is any staff interaction with person, even, you know, all outside. Because again, when we've tried to do staff connections with Zoom, it just isn't, you know, it's hard for all of us, and it's even harder for people who are not accustomed to using it. So I really think candidates need to, you know, get down here. Staff can, you know, assess if there's somebody who's going to roll up their sleeves or be somebody they want to work with.
Yes, I would suggest that I am directed to work closely, maybe with Jessica, on the details of the staff experience. Because there's, there will be some, I'm not sure how many people will be in person or on Zoom, so. Um, I'm not sure how many people will be in person or on Zoom. So, yeah, again, getting uh, you know, an option on the staff side would be maybe to direct me to work closely with someone on putting together um, in person or.
We, we.
Yeah, I think that wants to be the three officers.
Great, great. Yeah, so I can do that.
Yeah, it's important, I think. I think all three officers.
Actually, I have one more question. Amy, did I, did I hear you say direct interaction? I, I mean, is there a chance other, is there a chance for us to, to talk to them personally? Would that be at the meet and greet? Just, or, or not? It's all in a group. We, there's no one-on-one component.
It will. Yeah, right now, the board interactions would be interviews um, uh, between four and ten. Um, in non-COVID times, we would often have interviews and kind of a meet, a reception where the community would be there, staff would be there. Um, board members could interact informally and it really was a nice thing. Um, and the candidates would give kind of an overview introduction for everyone. Uh, but just with COVID now and with seven people, it, that might be, you know, it's, it's going to be really, it would be very, it would just not, it would be very challenging for this first round of seven people. So I do think that um, you know, if we brought back a smaller number of people, then you really could have more of a, a reception. Um, where it could be outside, there could be social distancing. It would allow everybody to have that one-on-one interaction and get information and a really good feel for the candidates.
Thank you.
Trustee Vogel.
So to just, I, I think I was talking over uh, Trustee Cortez, so I apologize for that. I do think the three officers all have uh, distinct interfaces with staff. So I think all three bring a really important perspective to figure out what that wants to look like. And if I try to keep up here, I think I have just figured out that the top four and the additional three are all Michigan, fairly close.
Okay. We have one from, we have one from out of state at least.
Yeah, Wisconsin.
Oh, that was right. One, one's out. Yes. Man, I feel like gotta go to the Excel to get the code, gotta get the code onto my note sheet, gotta get. Too hard to track.
So I really appreciate everyone's thoroughness and patience with this, this process.
So I think something that would be really helpful and, and I appreciate that we just decided a whole bunch of stuff together, which is a great process. If you could summarize that and send it back to us, um, that would be really helpful.
Why don't, why don't we actually summarize sort of the order of these different events that we've sort of settled on just for, so we're all clear on it before we leave tonight. If, if you could do that, Amy, just sort of run through in sort of sequential order of, or chronological order, whatever, how they're, how they're going to unfold on, on, in October.
So on uh, Wednesday, October sixth, there will be a staff experience with the candidates. Hopefully in person and outside. Um, or.
Whatever combination works, yeah.
Or combination. Um, and then beginning at four P M., there will be forty-five minute interviews with each candidate with a five-minute break in between. Um, I will be determining the schedule in the next day or two. And I will send out a schedule to the board members along with interview guidelines, questions in a summary, a note-taking sheet, um, as well as a link to provide feedback after the interviews. Um, I will be providing, uh, I will be gathering bios, biographical information of the candidates and providing that to the county or the, I'm sorry, the township, so we can put it on the website and that will be um, done in the next probably forty-eight hours. And then um, on that same link, um, so maybe there's a place on the website where in addition to the bios, we could have a link for community feedback uh, that will be opened up. Um, around this, on the sixth, so that residents that view the board interviews can provide feedback as well. And I will, happy to provide that in a, an email as well and.
Right, the other couple of critical steps I heard you say was even as early as Friday, October eighth, we're getting data back from you.
Yes.
And then Tuesday, the twelfth, at the B O T, is the board's first opportunity at deliberation.
Correct, yes.
And then some to-be-determined date after that would be potential follow-up interviews with a smaller group. And the piece that I didn't, I'm not like slotting in with crystal clarity is I agree that trying to do some community forum, community engagement process on the sixth is too much. Where did we end up putting that?
So the, the we did not. Yeah, I think we, I think that where we ended up for the sixth is that the community will be able to watch the interviews, the public interviews, and will be able to provide feedback uh, via a survey link that we will get to the website along with the bios and other information about the candidates.
Got it, got it.
So the community will definitely have input and which will be, and be able to participate fully in the process going forward.
I'm going to ask a quick question then turn to Clerk Flintoff. Um, I just want to clarify, so the staff experience event has all the candidates at once?
No, no, we, we would be.
We'll figure it out.
Yep.
Okay, all right. So some, somehow there's an opportunity on the sixth during the workday for staff to interact with the seven candidates. Um, if they can be here in person, somehow we'll sort of order that sequence so they're not all meeting with everybody all at once, but, you know, individually. Um, at least the candidates individually with the staff. And if we can't bring someone in, in person for some reason, we'll solve that with some kind of technology link. Okay, your question.
So, um, thank you for the recap. Amy, if you'd be so kind to include um, both Diane Benson, but also, or I guess not Diane, um, Christie Akin on all the materials that you just described as our office coordinator to help us. Um, she'd be the person will help um, coordinate everything for us and, and website and communications. Um, I would also say in terms of the community input, um, with the interviews on the sixth and the five-minute in between. Um, and this is, you don't have to, to answer now. Um, but with the, with the online form, I do wonder if we might be able to kind of real-time kind of input, sequence it um, with the interviews in some way. So I'm happy to work with you a little bit on that, but I would find that helpful. I mean, there's always um, public comment, but obviously we won't be doing that between every interview. So I'm thinking about some more kind of real-time written feedback from the public. Um, that would be appropriate. Um, and I've seen that before, but we just have to make sure there's a appropriate way to do it.
But the, if the forms are on the website and there's a way for people to comment on the website. Um, people could use those, that online form to give us feedback after the interviews on the sixth.
Right, right.
That would sort of keep it all together in, in one sort of channel.
Sure.
Right, I, I, I think we have to keep it an even playing field. We're not going to have enough time in five minutes between interviews to do something to get feedback real-time from residents. And to hear just a few isolated voices would, it, it's not an even playing field. I feel like we got to stick with the standard process.
That, yeah, that's not what I was suggesting. I was just, um, I, I, maybe I wasn't clear enough, but just about designing the online form experience so that it's, you know, kind of cycles through um, the interview leads, so it's more, you know, prompting, you know, like the American Idol, right? So, um, so, so we can talk about how to do that, but definitely um, the, the form so that people can go through uh, the experience with us. Um, I would also say procedurally, um, if we, if we could, Will, I, I would just like to, since we have a special meeting called already and noticed for the fifth, I would just ask if we could make a motion to cancel the special meeting on the fifth uh, so that we can take it off of our books.
Um, I s, I see no reason to keep it if we've got a plan to, to do all the interviews on the sixth.
Right.
Uh, would someone like to make a motion to?
Motion to cancel the meeting on the fifth?
Right, motion by Flintoff, support by
Support.
Support by Noel to cancel uh, the special meeting currently scheduled for October fifth.
Okay, Hathaway?
Yes.
Whoa, we need, we need discussion.
Oh, pardon me, go ahead, Will.
Um, Trustee Vogel.
Okay, never wanted to be the party pooper here, but I almost hate to say this. Do we need to reserve that time to continue work on, ah, rules of order?
No. We have enough on our plate that week.
It was really hard to suggest that.
Well, I think the, the problem with doing anything with that meeting is that uh, Trust, Trustee Noel has already indicated that she cannot attend on that occasion. So I would be, I would be reluctant to schedule something as substantive as that.
It's a bad thing for her.
Totally support that.
Thank you.
So are there any other comments before we call a roll? Please call a roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Corto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Motion passes, special meeting of the fifth is canceled.
Okay, have we, um, Amy, if I may, have we addressed all of the questions that you needed us to, to tackle for this evening?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hey, can, can I just clarify one more thing? Is Diane Ben, uh, Supervisor Hathaway, is Diane Benson still in the loop or she's kind of gone now? So who's the primary interface with Amy? Is that you or how is that working now without Diane in the loop?
Um, I, I think Diane has continued to, you know, sort of try, try to wrap up some of these things that she got started. So she's, she's still, um, you know, sort of seeing these things through. She, I, she has, she's very dedicated that way.
And, and she recommended that Christie, um, you know, run point with Amy too for coordination stuff, so I mean, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll have somebody else on soon, but unfortunately her contract ended.
All right, I, I think it's just an important point of clarity, because for as much as we all respect Diane, one ground rule she said is that we not all barrage Amy with a bunch of questions. And so I think it's important to keep the discipline established of a point person for the interface.
Yeah, so let's make it Christie.
Pardon? I, I don't think it can be Diane.
No, she's, she's on vacation. She's not really regularly available. I'd recommend Christie as a steady person who's here for the township.
All right, so maybe it's Christie and the supervisor of the township lead as the two interfaces.
That's fine. I, I think at this point, we're mostly dealing with kind of logistics and I think, you know, Christie is probably the best person to to, to make those kinds of arrangements. But I guess if there's, if there's questions that require something other than that, um, then I can, I can serve as a, a connection. Um, but Diane, just to clarify, Diane still is helping, but I think it's, it's best not to make her the liaison since she's no longer employed by the township. Are there other questions or clarifications that people are seeking? No? Oh, um, thank you very much, Amy. Um, looking forward to sort of, um, this next phase. Um, but, um, you know, very good work pulling together this um, group of candidates. I, I do want to say, I'm, all of them, you know, had strengths. Um, I think, you know, it was, in some cases, it was sort of difficult, but, and, and I, I, some of them, clearly we liked, we just liked them for other jobs um, than township administrator.
Can we get fair dibs on talking to them about another job?
Yeah. Also, I will pass that along.
And Amy, I was wondering how, like, in your, in your mind, you know, how is how, how did this recruitment, like, did it bear as good of a crop as you would hope for or what?
Yeah, I, I think this really sells the strength of the township. Uh, we, I think we had a, this is the most candidates I've ever presented.
Wow.
So that, yeah, there's some times it does not go this well. So I'm, and I'm, I'm thrilled that there are seven candidates that are of interest coming, of coming back, and there were even more that, you know, um, at least one person was interested in. So, um, this makes me very happy. So, um, you know, it's, that we've got, you know, the, some good options and it'll, and this, so this is going well. But again, I really think it speaks to the desirability of your community and it's, uh, Syo Township's an amazing place to work and live and play and there's so many assets and um, I think that's, it's been a pleasure to market this opportunity and, and get people excited about it.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I, I think that brings us then to the end of the, of that part, that part of our agenda, which I think brings us to public comment.
Okay, and thank you so much, Amy. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, you're welcome to stay in with public comment if you're interested.
Just in case it's related to the search, I will.
Yeah.
I'm all ears, yes.
Great, thank you.
So, um, let's see.
So are there any interested members of the public?
And Alec, are you available to serve as timekeeper?
Yes.
Okay, I see one Zoom hand, Rob Pattinson. Rob?
Thank you, Rob Pattinson, five hundred North Z. I've got two questions. First question is I would recommend, well, it's not a question, it's a recommendation, that you proceed with a second uh, interview, so that does two things. It takes the pressure off the board, thinking they have to make a decision on one forty-five minute interview. And also, this is an executive level position. And I haven't heard of executive level positions uh, being filled on one forty-five minute interview. And then thirdly, this is a vital and critical and maybe the most important decision you'll make as a board, because this could have an impact on the township for the next twenty years. So this is a critical person that is needed to fill this position. My second point is I've been recording meetings for, as a service for the Syo Township uh, Community News website. And uh, this is more of a question for Amy, maybe for Jessica, in terms of, I'm not interested in damaging someone's career by recording and posting a video that um, doesn't protect their anonymity, because six of these people, potentially seven, are going to go back to their current positions and I don't want to damage anyone's career by recording a meeting. Thank you.
Well, maybe at the end, if there's more, that's, is that's it? Yeah, go, go right ahead.
Um, Rob, uh, one thought on that is, um, you know, at the point that we do, at the point that we do interviews. you know, at the point that we do, at the point that we do interviews, the confidentiality would be lifted. Amy is managing that with all of the candidates. So anybody, you know, any number of the seven who are still interested and want to move forward to the interview stage will know that it's public and will under, will, will have communicated whatever they need to communicate. So we would, you know, record and post these just as we normally do other board meetings. So I I really think that it it wouldn't be, they they would have already notified whoever they needed to notify about their pursual of this job, pursuit of this job.
If there are no other public comments, motion to adjourn? Moved by Palmer. Seconded by Vogel. Please call the roll.
Hathaway?
Yes.
Palmer?
Yes.
Flintoff?
Yes.
Porto?
Yes.
Jerome?
Yes.
Noel?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yeah.
Motion passes, meeting adjourned, 9:15.
Wow.
Good night, everybody.